I'd like to call the Village Board of Weston to order. And if we could all stand and pledge allegiance to his life. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Well, Keith, if we could have Lauren and Steve Minell. Yi and Bob Bender, please. Um, we're gonna just.
We'll call here?
What?
Should we both call it?
No.
Uh, we'll call. Well, I assumed it got done. I looked around. There are seven people here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Finell.
Here.
White.
Here.
John.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
Okay. If the four of you could maybe come in the center here, please.
Watch the tripping cameras.
Yeah, well, otherwise we don't know where we're gonna do it, right? Yeah.
Appreciate us older folks.
Bob, that doesn't mean you don't come back next month.
It's all right. Unless you've already got somebody picked out.
Oh, nobody else picked out.
Watch your wires, everybody. Okay.
Get any corners.
I'll just tell them. No, you get, Brett's gotta, you gotta get in between the blacks. You can, I'll be to the blacks right here. Come on, Steve, there's a little bit of a play here. No, you get in the front.
Oh, for a break.
And split up the green and that.
Okay, okay.
Right, color, hey, hey, my girls, right? I got it, right?
I don't know if any of this, I don't know if any of this can look good.
Yeah, make sort of flags behind there, maybe, yeah.
Awesome. Increasing.
So, wow. Lauren.
So we have three of, uh, three of our members of the Board of Trustees who are leaving their seat on the board. Having been, and we have three new people coming on and their replacement as of tomorrow. But I guess as a, certainly as a token of recognition of their service to the village, we wanted to present them each with a little, a nice, a little plaque here, I should say. I'll just have these, hold these now. You can take your picture. You can show them to the, to the audience, if you would. I'm gonna have to read one as I, as I present.
Sort of the three trustees and a, and a commission member and a committee member. Yeah.
Yes, and one of our longest, one of the longest standing committee members, probably Bob Bender.
Really? Oh, really?
Yes.
I, the first time I was on the crew, I think it was either ninety or ninety-one, somewhere in there. It's the first time I've done, and that was.
Place the fire.
Yeah, I know. Let's work the applause. So rather than try to remember everything that everybody's served on over the years, tried to make this, I guess, all encompassing. But I'm gonna read the one for trustee White, who has actually served, also has an employee of the village, and I think going back to the town as well.
Nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah.
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 Police.
Six.
This is the police chief.
I'm gonna keep as deputy chief.
One day we see how famous a fire department.
Uh, at one time, village president.
Yes, trustee for four terms.
Five terms. So.
It gets to be a blur after a while.
So he came up with a little plaque for everybody to remember their time with the village. And the wording is, "On behalf of the residents of the village of Weston and the Board of Trustees, thank you for your many years of service to the village of Weston. In many hours you have devoted in your service to the village represent a sacrifice in your personal life, which few people are willing to make, your service is deeply appreciated. We wish you the best in your future pursuits."
Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, Steve.
Thank you.
Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Send it, I'll send it to Yi or Yi.
Okay.
I'll send it to you guys.
I can also type it. Just wait, I gotta take.
Mark, are you sucking? I won't make you hold your breath till, one, two, three.
Okay, look here.
Okay.
No. I gotta say that.
I don't know why I took my glasses off. I have no hair. What's the difference?
Good job, everybody.
Good job. Thank you all very much.
Mark.
Yeah.
Bob was appointed to finance committee. The city was incorporated and the finance committee was formed.
Really? Holy, that the whole time? In our room, my. I saw Dick Jaeger the other night. We're getting on morning.
It was on there also. And then I, who wasn't there?
We're gonna bring you back, and he said, no, you're not. That was a long time ago. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, let's see. Boosted, please. Under public, public comments, I have some, want to introduce to you Eric Lang. He is, um, are you the new person yet or not?
As of May sixteenth.
Okay, as of May sixteenth, he will be our new deputy chief of fire for Safer. Josh Finkie is the new, uh, the new fire chief, and he is gonna be the deputy. I've seen him work together for two or three months already, and they're phenomenal. So it's gonna be good. We're on a good path with Safer right now. But under public comments, Eric is, has something to say. And if you could just, for the record, under public comments, you have to say your name and your address, please.
My name is Eric Lang. My address is fifty-three oh three Mesker.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I'm here today with Lauren, leaving the Safer district. We'd like to give you a shield for the time that you spent on the board advocating for us and how much we appreciate everything you've done for Safer.
There you go. Josh would have been here with Eric. Josh would have been here with Eric, but he is at another community, I think, trying to get some more business. Good. Congratulations, Lauren. Thank you.
This is for pleasure, right?
Yep. And Eric, I know you gotta go, so, yep.
Thank you.
So I told him it's gonna, it's gonna be a little later start than God, so. But thank you very much, and thank everybody for their recognition for Lauren.
Thank you.
And then under public, Lauren?
Thank you.
I'm not gonna miss this, I'll tell you that. I'll chit chat over there, so, anyway, so I'm just teasing. Public comment or?
I was, I was gonna say at the end.
Well, at the end, all right, done deal. All right, so we have minutes from the previous meetings, three twenty-one, twenty-two, and three twenty-nine, twenty-two, joint board.
Motion to, uh, motion to approve items eight and nine concurrently.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Minell. On the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Reports, minutes from boards, committees, and commissions. This is the one that I just kinda laid through, and we do the whole thing, right? We do the second one.
Motion to acknowledge fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Second. Motion by Zong, second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion?
Send the question if there was any questions on the reports that any of the trustees had.
Right.
What's that name?
No. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Reports from departments. You wanna go through them, or are you done talking? An- anymore for an administrative report?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple things. Uh, the building project, um, there had been a, I guess, a expectation perhaps that the overhead doors are gonna become a considerably higher cost item, although we were not jumping in and saying we were gonna pay for them. But it sounds like now that, as of Thursday, uh, or Friday, I should say, Myron has come to agreement with their original supplier, who was telling them they were gonna pass on some cost increases. Uh, so it's not anything that's gonna, um, I guess, in any high dollar sense affect us, but there apparently is a premium color involved that, that'll, that'll end up being charged five thousand dollars against our project contingency that's built into the bid. But I, in the end, that's good news. They're gonna be, we're gonna have doors in time. I think within twelve weeks is what, was what I was told. So, otherwise, they were talking about a six-month delivery time and so forth, so. And some other items outstanding there, um, I have put some information in a cloud drive for you. Our newsletter has hit the mailboxes. I got a text over the weekend that somebody was happy to see a print newsletter. So, one, I suppose, doesn't tell you the story for everybody, but I don't know if people in general appreciate something in their hand instead of email. Put some background in the cloud drive also about the potential uh, or the potential request on the discontinuance of Dominica Street, south of Mary Lane. That item is being, um, somewhat held up because there is a proposal to purchase that property by a local developer, and we're meeting with them this week. Agenda item later on, uh, new business for, um, agreement with AECom to do some test, bench testing on PFAS treatment. And I guess that's just kind of a synopsis of what's in there. I don't know if you have any questions on anything on my report. There will be some more discussions later on a few items, I'm sure. Uh, so, any questions?
Any questions for Keith?
I just was wondering if that street, that Dominica or whatever, is there gonna be?
Oh. Yeah, I don't know if you were able to access the cloud drive. There's a lot more background in there, if you were so interested, so.
Okay, all right, clerk, anymore?
I have nothing to add to my report unless any questions.
Any questions for Carrie?
I just wanna say really great job on the election, uh, on the elections this year. Definitely a higher turnout than usual.
Yes. Thank you.
I guess I wanna say, this is, I told Sherry, this was the first time I got to actually use their, I went in person to vote. I had been, because of COVID and my husband, I had voted absentee, and this was the first election that I went back where the one holy place and with all the, very nice.
Yeah.
I told her.
Yep.
Good job.
Thank you.
Finance, anymore you wanna add, Jessica, or any questions of Jessica? Especially after a, kind of a short finance, but severely long tourism. Um, not severely, it was good stuff.
As long as it's necessary to get.
Yep, it was good, but very lively. Fire, any mess? Eric left, park and rec. Anything for Sean, or anymore you wanna add?
Um, well, I did have a report in the packet, but I just wanted to touch base. Um, so we had our resident swim lesson registration start today for the pool. Um, so it's another test of the new software system that's being used at the Aquatic Center and for park reservations this year. Um, and when I checked the log, we were at like twenty-four hundred dollars in sales today. As far as swim lessons registration, we had at least session three, level three was full. Uh, we had, and I mean, ever, mostly the second session and third session were half, half class were full, or half full already. Um, so that's going well. Um, non-resident registration starts two weeks. Nate helped out and figured out everything this morning as far as little, little glitches. You know, just because it's a new system, it's the first time we use it for swim lesson registration, but it went really quick and easy. Like, couple emails, just like descriptions on swim lessons, setting, changing the time. Uh, but it was just, you know, maybe three, four, five, five little issues. Someone emailing at six-thirty this morning, wanting to register already, and it's gonna get turned on until eight o'clock. So, um, just minor stuff like that, so. Uh, but yeah, it was good for that, and people are definitely encouraged to go sign up for swim lessons because they were following, and we sold the passes today too, so.
Stuff. Thank you. Any more questions, Sean?
Yeah, what's the age limit for level three and level two and level one? What is it?
So the swim lessons are offered from five to thirteen years old.
That's a level three?
Uh, no, I'm saying in general, all of our lessons, we don't start till five years old. So, I mean, you, you could have a ten-year-old that could be a level one, depending on the familiarity with water. Right, so it depends on how much previous lessons they have. I mean, I talked to a lady today, she started lessons with her child at six months.
Yeah.
So I just talked her through the levels and what they had previously done, and we figured out the best combination. Once they get in a lesson anyways, if they are above or below, we will move them. You know, instead of keeping them there so they're comfortable with where they're at.
Advance here. So five years is the start?
Yes, and we're limited just because it's outdoor pool.
Yeah.
You get younger kids in that, they end up turning purple.
My mom throwing me in the water at three years old, that was not right.
Did she tell you she was trying to teach you how to swim?
I learned real quick. Okay, well, good. Thank you, Sean. Good. That's a good, good question. I didn't know that. Uh, planning and development, anything more for Jennifer? Jennifer, you wanna add anything?
I don't have anything additional.
When does Emily come back?
She sent an email today on the eleventh.
Eleventh of?
Yay.
What's happening? What am I thinking?
Yeah.
Passed it in April.
The eleventh.
Ah, good, that's exciting. That's exciting. So, okay, all right, anymore for Jen, from everybody? Uh, police, uh, chief, I talked to him on the hallway, he had to leave. He was gonna do his report and then leave, but he couldn't handle to do it, so the report's in the packet, I believe. Public works for Michael. Where's Michael? There he is.
Uh, I moved up to the.
Yeah, I see that.
I guess just, maybe one item note, we did get, um, a grant for the Weston Avenue reconstruction from Alderson to Birch. It's a joint project with the village of Rothschild. Um, so total amount's about seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, so three sixty-six is our share. And then, uh, yeah, and then meeting with the, the MPO meeting last week, it sounded like us and the city of Wausau, we're the only two communities that submitted applications for the federal fiscal year twenty-two funding, which we submitted Northwestern Avenue for. They're anticipating a million dollars or so being available, and our two projects essentially each asked for five hundred thousand, which funds seventy percent of the project. So I'm anticipating we'll be receiving that then, likely in May.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you think, Marv, if it, since it was a joint project with the city of Wausau, then it might have put us at the top of the list?
Uh, we're the only two communities that submitted projects in the MPO area, so, and this is money that the state is getting and is being encouraged to spend as soon as possible, so there is a tight window and pretty stringent guidelines, and we're the only communities that had projects that could fit that.
You were explaining how it had to be shovel-ready really quick.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Good. Then, um, we did have a meeting with the DOT regarding business fifty-one, the reconstruction of that, that's planned for twenty-twenty-six. They made it fairly apparent that if we have any utility work we wanna do as part of that project, we need to get that going ASAP, so I'll be looking to get some likely utility design proposals, although Becker-Happi is on board already with the city of Waus, or city of Schofield and the village of Rothschild doing their water and sewer design. So I don't know if we wanna go get.
What, what does that encompass from where to where?
Um, for the entire project or just for the village?
Just, yeah, what, where's our Porsche fifty-one, from where to where?
Uh, from like Volkman Street, um, or like.
Which is by Festival.
Festival Foods to Walgreens.
To Walgreens.
Yep.
So do we have to talk to a QuickTrip? Because they're gonna remodel. Do they have to get it in that street? They're gonna move their stadium.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so we can work with them with the, as far as any site plans that we've, you know, we have that already. We've approved their site plan, so we can.
Like they're putting a car wash in too, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we can coordinate all those items right away. So I guess my ask is, do we work with Becker-Happi, who that's, who both those other communities are already working with? Or do you want me to try to get a proposals from other commu, or other consultants as well?
You know, for me, it makes sense to deal with the same, if you've got three communities dealing with the same, and you bring in a third party or a second party.
Keith?
Not to discount.
Yep, same thing.
Yeah, do.
Well, it also, it also shows partnership with our neighboring community.
Okay.
Cool. Okay. Uh, technology, Nate?
Nothing to add to our report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Nate? But did you have something? I, I heard you go get your computer up before.
Oh, I.
I didn't have a mouse, so I don't know if you wanna know that, so.
No, and I had clicked on something and it didn't come up, and Nate just found it.
Operator here.
I just.
Yeah, I might have double-clicked and I turned it on, turned it off, I don't know.
Yeah. Sounds good. Uh, okay, um, looking for acknowledgement, right? Other reports, or not?
Motion to acknowledge, um, fourteen, fifteen.
Twenty-one.
I mean, twenty, I'm sorry, I didn't forget this. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
And twenty-three also.
And twenty.
And twenty-three.
No, that's good.
Did I miss that?
Yeah. You did. We're good.
It's okay.
We're looking for a second. Second, so we have a motion by Ermeling and a second by Feeny. Any more on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Work product transmittals.
Move to acknowledge items thirty and thirty-one concurrently.
Uh, motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by White. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Consent agenda. We have thirty-three vouchers, new lodging permits, beer and liquor, cigarette license, lodging permits, weights and measures, acknowledging a planned commission resignation from Gail Marshall. Action on all, or you wanna piecemeal?
I move to approve and/or dilage items thirty-three through thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion by White, second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Orders, resolutions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, I know I passed my opportunity, but I'd just like to express my appreciation to Gail Marshall for, it's, it's a rough committee to me on, and I appreciated you all the work and attention she did.
Yep.
Tell her she did her homework.
I, I called her today and said the same thing, that, uh, thanks for your service. Actually, I talked to her a little bit. She's really excited to get on the county board, so.
She might change her mind.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we'll see. All right, well, thank you. Uh, let's see, ordinances, resolution, resolution number two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-zero-nine. A resolution designating officials to declare official intent under reimbursement bond regulations.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Proclamations, proclamation number P dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, Arbor Day proclac, oh, I had it.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Oh, I had it, I should have never said.
Move to approve proclamation P dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-one designated June tenth, twenty-twenty-two as Arbor Day in the village of Weston.
Move by White.
Second.
Second by Hushane. All, uh, any more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Note forty-three, update on American Rescue Plan, ARPA funds. Um, most of us were here for the finance. So I think, I think what, and you can say it, Jessica, too, I think you're gonna come back with a few more options, right? Just to kind of spur some discussion?
So the plan, the takeaway from finance was to come back, and they're specifically looking for what kind of tax impact we'll apply ARPA funds to CIP projects. So instead of borrowing, say, two million, we're only gonna borrow one point five, or. Um, so we're gonna come back with the potential tax rate impacts and see where the committee decides.
So, and I kind of took it that way, and I also took it that if we put it towards something, you know, and let's say it's a park, which, you know, we have to, we have to someday. Um, but then, then the possible may be more cost, you know, more upkeep, more maintenance, more of that too. So it could be each way. It could be something that pulls it back a little bit, and then also adds, right? Did I kind of hear that the way everyone else did, or no?
No, I.
No?
I, I, they're looking to, to.
To actually impact the taxes lower.
Kind of keep the tax, so it's not taking a.
Well, I like that direction.
Then we will look at other projects, but those projects are not supposed to add to the tax.
Okay. Good.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have a comment on is when, when you see like, as example, the first one, it says twenty-five percent is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Actually, it's less than that because we're, we only have a million seven.
Not the two point five.
Yeah.
Point two.
Yeah.
I'm gonna keep it as is. I want you to determine what part of the total do you want to put towards something.
So now we have to figure out math, so we.
I, I, this is a general idea. This is not in, we're not gonna write a policy as limiting. We're just gonna guide, want to guide the board of how the finance committee is recommending the board spend the funds.
So as an example, when I went through this, I actually chose B for every single category, except for the last one, which I had ten percent. And then on five, I had all, uh, item C, so that, I actually scored it and, and, and put a number, a letter down for that, so. If you're taking input, that was it.
Thank you.
I'm with you. Okay. So let's see, we approved the trees, and now we're talking about ARPA. Any more on ARPA funds?
I'll be, any required report, um, probably by the thirtieth. So I am required to report to the federal government. Um, the due date is April thirtieth. Even though that's a Sunday, they have not moved the due date, so I.
April thirtieth is a Saturday.
Yeah, so I, I still plan submitting it next week.
Okay.
I'll bring back what I've submitted at the next board meeting.
Okay. And then our second installment or our second hit will be in June sometime, right?
Yes.
Okay. Christian, thank you.
I have a further question. In the discussion about, wasn't there, um, a possibility of more funding coming to the communities through the?
Bipartisan law?
Yeah.
That's what we're getting, um, it's going to the state.
Oh, it's going to the states?
Yeah, so the state's DOT has additional funds.
There's money coming. I mean, it's almost weekly. I mean, the police department received some as of late. The school system, I think, received some more last week, like eighty-seven thousand, so. It's some, it's just one of the.
There had been talk about other funds other than these initial funds that we had got.
Yeah. I, I know small businesses has gotten some, so, uh, you know, every time I see DC Everest Center, it's kind of neat. We've got a branch in La Crosse, and you'd think La Crosse is so big. DC Everest gets more money than the city of La Crosse. That's how big DC Everest is. So it's, uh, pretty neat. Anyway, I got all these charts on the wall. No, I don't. All right, so I'm never gonna forget the ARPA, that's for sure. Are we finished with forty-three? Yes?
I think so.
All right. New business, forty-four, agreement with elders to furnish financial advice and support for a possible village referendum regarding public safety services. What's your pleasure?
Move to prove based on recommendation from finance committee.
Motion by Zagami. Second by Ermeling. On the question.
I just wanted to point out that I go to the one, um, finance, I feel that we should be doing in exploring some other alternatives besides going to referendum. Um, we've had some discussions at, at the trustee level as well as planning at times, and I just feel that using a company that issues our bonds for the village, I just don't think that that's, uh, the correct way of doing it, but that's just me.
So that's noted for Steve, and then, um, one of the meetings that I attended with Schofield, the town of Weston does not have to do a referendum, correct?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the town law, I guess.
The towns do not need referendum.
Right, they can just vote it at the last meeting of the year.
Uh, unincorporated townships, under five thousand people can set the tax rate whatever they want.
And, you know, or get it greater, you know, so I, I was at a meeting with the town of Reed one time, and they were trying to get it greater, so. Pretty interesting. Um, okay, so.
Motion and a second.[1684.65]
Yes, we do. Uh, any more on the question? And we've noted what trustee Manel has said. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So carried, uh, six to one. Uh, forty-five, well four, PFAS bench testing. There's another word I don't wanna have to remember, but it's PFAS now. Who's got it? You or Mike?
I took it.
Okay.
You wanna take it, Michael? You can. Either way.
You're good.
Well, both of you jump in at once.
Yeah.
Well, I can introduce it, and if there's detail that Michael knows, me, that's fine.
We have Angel online, too.
Okay, so Angel Javol, our, uh, consultant from AECom is also available for questions if need be, but, um, you're aware, I think the board's aware that we issued a, um, press release on the discovery of PFAS from the combination of wells three and four, Mesker and Sternberg, uh, from the treatment plant, which has one entry point for the distribution system. And, um, result, those, those two wells, that source had a, um, a PFAS, I guess, between the two of them, one had a higher than, higher than twenty parts per trillion. PFAS level, the other one, I think just had a higher hazard index. So, um, these discoveries are a health, exceed health advisory levels from Wisconsin Department of Health. There's no exceedance yet of any safe drinking water level standard. However, I guess prudence, we felt we should analyze what is gonna be best in terms of a short-term solution to, I guess, um, goal of not having to issue a health advisory level, our, our health advisory notice to all of our customers. The, uh, the other option that we're having them analyze is some modeling of the system so that we potentially blend well four with water from our distribution system, and then introduce it to the, to the distribution system. Um, so that's, that's another, uh, aspect of this particular, uh, proposal from AECom. So, uh, water's already been sampled, then sent down to Texas for bench testing, so I, Michael can probably fill in some details on what may all happen here, but as felt it prudent to issue that, um, authorization for them to continue this, this, uh, testing. Now, whether we, what we do to act on it after that, I guess is another question. So, I don't know, Michael, if you wanna fill in any blanks here, I guess I'm not just giving the high-level overview.
Yeah, so there, um, I guess the treatment options, they'll look at, uh, you know, our treatment plant, uh, as it, when it was originally built, was designed for, um, granular activated carbon treatment. Guess I'm not sure exactly why, and I don't know, Keith knows why, that, that was never put in. Uh, it was before both of us were here. So, the, you know, we're thinking that would be the most cost-effective, long-term treatment option, just because the facility is already piped and set up for that. Uh, so they'll be looking at, uh, several different, um, I guess formulas or mixtures of the granular activated carbon to see which treats uh, the water, um, from our well in particular, the best. And then, um, also the ion exchange media, there is, uh, possibilities, proposals for short-term treatment using ion exchange, which would be kind of more of a, a rental unit until, uh, a, a long-term, um, facility can be built and, uh, installed. So I guess we're looking at both, uh, short-term treatment options and long-term, um, permanent solutions for the treatment of the PFAS, uh, levels for, um, those two wells in particular that go to the treatment plant.
So what is GEC?
It's granular activated carbon.
Or GAC.
Or GAC.
But GAC, so they never actually got to the twenty parts per trillion, right?
Yeah. Uh, no, those, those wells were.
Yeah, those were.
I know, but what, what is a DNR standard?
The DNR.
Trying to get the twenties.
Is that seventy? The Department of Health Services is twenty.
Okay.
So we have two conflicting.
Yes, okay.
It's actually not a safe drinking water standard at this stage.
It's, yeah, and I was trying to, I'm talking to Keith today, and I was, I thought I saw something last week on some news that they have to start over again. And I, and I found the website, National Law Review, but there's quite a bit of information on here, so, anyway. Yeah.
Um, quick, a quick question. Um, is AECom also helping out with, um, do they do any of the local work as well, too, with PFAS, uh, you know, consulting as well, too, or, 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 or who is Wassa working with Rothschild and the Kerry as well then?
I think everybody's kind of got their own, um, consultants. Um, AECom does have, uh, I know Angel gave a presentation at the last meeting. Um, as a company, they're, they're nationwide, they're worldwide, they have experience in PFAS treatment, um, primarily on the east coast, because they're a little ahead of us, um, you know, the New Hampshire, New York, uh, New England area. Um, but, yeah, they have, um, I, I guess the expertise to handle it. I know, I believe that's one thing where Wassa, um, was looking to hire a consultant, because the, the expertise wasn't there on their current, uh, staff or consulting team that they had hired for their, uh, water plant.
AECom has worked with several, on several other.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're having discuss.
AECom is working with, um, the Madison Water Utility currently.
Okay.
For their PFAS.
And Keith is kind of talking with Gary Olson at Rothschild a little bit on some of their issues and our issues, so.
Because, uh, I, I, I was good, I was just kind of curious if, um, if the other municipalities were also using AECom as well, too, then I would be supportive of it. Uh, I know that this is definitely something that's, that I feel is, um, a priority that needs to be looked at, but as many of the board members know, I'm also a big bidder as well, too, huh? As well, too. So I don't know, was there an actual request for proposals or rebids from other individuals, potential partners, potential organizations or as well, too, or did we just went to this one because we were comfortable with it?
Well, we've been working with AECom on our master planning activities for our, for our water system, design of our, well, seven and eight. Another project that's here on the agenda, and I guess in terms of the time sensitivity, we felt it would be best just to take some, uh, take this step, so.
I guess also, you know, every, every well is different, every aquifer is slightly different, so even though we're geographically somewhat close to each other, um, you know, Wassa, Rothschild, their wells are very close to the Scottson River, um, you know, so they likely have different characteristics than the wells we have that are not right, right off the river, too, so.
But, but that's not his ask.
Yep.
His ask is.
Yeah, I, I know, but if you're working with a consultant.
Time. We, we should.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, we should be bidding.
If I could mention one thing, um, just, just to place this in a context, um, there is a funding mechanism for PFAS work that we are investigating. And the requirement under that is to look at qualifications-based selection for, uh, for this sort of work. So that is one item just to keep in mind as you, as you continue forward with that, that plan for the next stages for this work.
Alright, thank you, Angel. Lauren?
Uh, just to have a question, if, when we're done with this whole process and there's a system recommendation, will this take care of other possible problems that might show up? Uh, as I'm saying, I will plover whether I have, what was it that they found in the soils?
Nitrites?
Nitrites, or, or, I understand granulating activated charcoal is very effective at removing a lot of pollutants.
Yeah, so for, like, well three in particular, um, before we'd be able to use a, a PFAS treatment, we'd have to do iron and manganese removal. Just to help, I guess, extend the life of the media, because otherwise it'll.
Fog.
It'll, it'll clog up and, uh, use the media a lot quicker. So there'd be a, a train of treatment option, or, or a train of treatment, I guess, of the water.
Well, just total stays on track.
Yeah.
Is the water being tested for the new wells, where seven and eight are going in?
That is a requirement, um, of the well driller. Uh, PFAS wasn't something we tested for, you know, historically, so, um, that, that data is not there for those wells, so, uh, as soon as.
Tested?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We need to drill a well now to, to test it, so.
So we are going to test.
Yeah, it's a requirement before.
We're gonna put the wells in and then test them. They were test wells drilled, but not tested for PFAS.
Correct.
Did he, excuse me?
Yeah.
Did he close that, uh, test well? They didn't form a trail at the beginning.
Yeah.
For all these.
The test wells were abandoned.
Did he close, have banned them?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry.
Does everybody, what causes this?
What causes this? Teflon, Scotchgard, uh, fire foam.
I know fire foam.
Uh, fire foam is the one that we got talked about up.
Nonstick stuff that's on your pots and pans.
It's Teflon, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely. I put on every morning, just for customer service.
Cause my, different ones have asked me, and I said.
I thought it'd be funny. Popcorn bags, uh, pizza boxes, water-resistant clothing, uh, water-resistant repellent like Gore-Tex. Uh, dental floss.
Really?
Okay, yep, dental floss. So it's been around for, as Keith and Michael have been saying, for forty, fifty years.
Fast food wrappers.
Yep, yep, wrappers, kinds of fast food wrappers, yeah.
Okay, so everything.
Probably.
Yeah, it's, it's largely been phased out in the U.S., but you, uh, worldwide, used constantly, yeah. So.
It's.
Play resistant.
Paint-resistant carpets, yep.
Really? I've written that in my front room.
Yep, well, thanks, there's some more PFAS.
Play resistant child wear, clothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, what is it?
It's a compound, it's a carbon link compound.
Called a forever chemical.
Yes, which stops things from sticking.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's.
Including your brain.
Whatever goes, that's what's, yeah.
Uh, Mr. President, I, I guess, I, I'm just kind of hesitant, because if we're gonna do this, I want to do it right and be efficient to, uh, cost-efficient as well, too, for our, uh, our taxpayers. I'm kind of torn at the moment here between, um, you know, yes or no. I know I'm a lame duck elected official now, but I mean, I, 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 I am just a big, uh, supporter of it going out and looking for potential bids as well, too. Not saying that I don't, that I'm doubting AECom's work, but, um, I just, I don't know.
Is there, is there action on this?
This, yes, this was asked on by Public Works.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Similar to our discussion about Becker Happy, this is a, this is a situation where I feel a single-source standpoint AECom on this is our logical course of, um, action.
I, and, and is there also a sense of urgency, too? Did I not hear, uh, Hushain?
They're already familiar with our system.
Yep.
And they have done a lot of our work, and they got paid for it. If you bring somebody new, we have to educate them so they can understand our system.
But, but he, he does have a good point, and you'll never be a lame duck.
I agree, I agree with you. If we had a couple months.
Yeah.
I'll be the first one saying, you gotta ban it out.
Yep.
You're not gonna award the contract.
The only, the only thing I wanna add is I don't want this to be the same excuse that comes back time and time again to this board when there's a contract that's coming back here that we worked with them before and we're gonna have them again, because, um, tradition should not be the obstacle to progress as well, too. So, um, I, I'll vote in support of this one, but I'm, I'm hoping that this board will consider A in the future here, that, and also staffs that they need to bring back for a bit, even if we worked with these individuals before as well.
So noted. So what's your pleasure on forty-five, well four PFAS bench?
Move to approve the contract AECom to perform a bench scale test treatability study for PFAS removed for well four for the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Uh, motion by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Question?
Funding for this coming from utility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So.
Any more?
Save our receipts.
Thank you. In case we get reimbursed on it. Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, forty-six, well seven and eight construction contract award.
I'll move to approve awarding the well seven and eight construction contract to Ellis Construction for a bid amount of three million, two hundred and four thousand dollars, and does that come out in utility?
Yes, it does.
Awarding to.
Well, yeah, at least they put it off the bids. Yep, there you go.
I, I was happy with this one.
So.
Have to.
Motion by White.
I'll second.
Second by Manel. On the question.
Question.
Don't, don't, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You, okay.
I was just gonna clarify, um, that this project was bid with several alternates.
Right. We have to declare A and B.
We have to decide between the bathrooms and the shelter. Um, Ellis did say, you know, as long as we get the base, if the base bid is approved, they will hold their price for the alternates. Um, you know, for a month, so if we, you know, take that to park committee and work on, do we want to add the bathrooms, or do we not? Do we want the shelter, do we not? Uh, that doesn't need to be decided today, it's not, doesn't have to be final. Um, but if, if we do award the base bid, then they can start ordering their materials to do the.
So who's gonna remember, or should put the alternate, uh, options back on the board?
What was that?
Who's gonna remember that? How's that gonna get in front of this board again, yea or nay on A and B? Because C is not being supported by staff.
Correct.
But A and B is up in the air.
Yeah, so I, my thought was, since they are park items, we would discuss them with the park committee. Um, they can go to Public Works in May, and then we'd bring it to the board in May.
Think they were being parked or Public Works? You said.
I'd say we take it to parks and Public Works, or just parks.
I, I thought it was there already. I, I remember saying no. I remember lobbying pretty hard against it, and, and yet it was still approved, which is fine. But I just, I kind of thought.
It was a.
I was surprised to see it on here.
It was approved to be bid as alternate, so we can make a decision once prices were known. Cause that was the main hang, hold, holdup, was we didn't know what the cost was gonna be. So now we know what the cost is gonna be, and we can make that decision based on.
And they could all decide to eliminate both.
Yep, we can get rid of both, we can.
Get both on the board, but.
Is there bathrooms in other wells?
Um, we do have bathrooms in so, not public bathrooms, but staff.
Okay, well, this would be.
So are these staff or public?
This would, these would open externally, so it'd be, a park goer could use the bathroom without going into the wellhouse. It would just be attached to the, the pump house.
And our new municipal center is just down the road.
Correct, so that's why we have it as an alternate. If, if we want it, great, if not, they don't have to be there.
By the park, never mind.
Well, it's up above the park. It's up above the park.
Above the park, right.
It's across from the, uh, boys' shop.
Yeah, yeah, but it's a kind of way to explain.
Part of the park that's.
Yep, and, and there'll be bathrooms on yellow banks, too. Yep.
Um, on the drawing, they show future chemical feeds. Portable ones. And what chemicals we talking about? Is that for chlorine and fluoride, or for different chemical, or what?
Yeah, so there's a fluoride room and a chlorine room planned, you know, and then the additional one was, would be if, you know, we need to add something for pH treatment. Um, the well, the well test initially doesn't look like it needs hit. Um, or, you know, if we had need to add, uh, polyphosphate for, like, uh, iron manganese, the test wells had, the, the, the test well quality looked good, that we weren't gonna need additional treatment, but we wanted it built in in case there was something in the future we weren't adding onto the structure. Um, there was, so there's room for an additional chemical feed if, if needed.
Okay, um, and then I see we have only one better on the project?
There was only one general contractor that did on there.
What was the engineer estimate for this project? I'm not talking about your estimate.
Sure.
You had an estimate for budgeting, but he also, or she also had an estimate for this project. What was that number?
Angel, do you have your, um, engineer's estimate? I don't have it handy.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the bid review correct currently. Um, the estimate that was sent to PSC is the one I was looking at. And that was including the SCADA project, three million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And the SCADA project will be separate from this, so.
Was that your question, Hushain?
Right, yes, and, and repeat that number again, please, three million, what?
Three million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
So he was lower than you, right? The contractor was.
That, that includes the, um, SCADA project, which is estimated about five hundred thousand, but even removing that, yes, the estimate is overall higher.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yep.
Any more in discussion?
And what are we? Are we doing well, seven and eight, and how do we, what recommendation are we?
Yeah, so well.
Not, he's, he's gonna take that to Public Works and Park, and then bring it back.
As far as the shelters and restaurants, we, there was no decision on that.
Okay, Michael.
Yep.
Are we gonna have another contract for iron removal and manganese design, or how that's gonna work?
Yeah, so the, the test well showed essentially zero iron, zero manganese at these wells.
Right.
So for seven and eight, um, that's nothing, that's not, not of concern.
At this.
We can talk about four.
For four, yeah, so those, those will be future proposals that we need to send out for the.
There's two, yeah, there's two projects that are, that are still on the capital plan, that would be the iron and manganese removal for well five and one.
One five.
And then, at the, uh, and then the well, the iron and manganese removal for well four.
Well, that's four, we're gonna do the bench test.
Well, five, well, three, first.
Yeah.
No, four according to what here, you said number four, but also according what Mike said, Michael said, they can't do that unless they remove the iron and manganese, because they need to.
So, just in trade, the bench, Charlie.
Yes, so well, well four water tested fairly better than well three water, even though they're a half mile apart. So, the, the bench testing was strictly for well four to get that one back online.
Correct.
Um, well three has the iron and manganese issue, so a, at this point, we consider that well is just gonna be off for the foreseeable future.
Well, three.
Well, three. Um, because of the iron and manganese complicates the rest of the treatment there. So we'll get well four back online, hopefully, um, sooner rather than later. Get these two wells built, and then get, um, three and.
The ones that. I, I can feel a question out there by a public, so I'll ask it for them. We have currently six wells right now?
Correct.
Okay, all six are working, but we turned off three. Uh, three, number three.
And four is currently off.
So three and four are off, so we have one and two, and then we have five and six running.
Two is, two, two is a separate well.
Yep.
Over by Kerry.
So, that's my next question. So, um, all the wells touch all, everywhere, or are there certain areas that are just, uh, served by? So that's my next question, so all the wells touch all everywhere or are there certain areas that are just served by one well?
So well two is the one that is over by Cedar Creek, so that one's just.
So because of logistics and distance, it sits there by itself, it's on its own.
Correct.
Okay, so if well, if well two closes, how do we serve that group?
We have an interconnect with Rothschild.
Okay, and I know there's some back and forth on Rothschild. So then all the rest, if three and four were open, all of them can serve everything.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so how much added pressure does that put on to get to a longer, you know, so if they're all pumping at the same time, you know, accordingly to keep the pressure to right, how big of a change is that when you pull three and four off for the rest?
Are you talking pressure like water pressure or pressure as far as?
I mean, I know the answers, but I'm asking for everybody else because I really don't know the answer. So, I mean, wouldn't you have to increase the pressure or the turnout of those pumps to handle?
They just pump more hours in a day.
Okay, really?
Powers.
Yep.
As powers, that's to provide the pressure.
And seven and eight, I know that they do a pressure, but still, you know, so when I'm drawing water, I'm on the end, you know, so it's the neighbor across the street and I, when we draw water, we're at the end, so there's no flush until you guys come twice a year or gals. So it's, but it's coming out of the pipes, not out of some tower that's, I can't even think of where the closest tower is to me, or Husheng, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the one over here by Al.
Interesting, you know, that's pretty wild. Yeah, we're not even talking about the source system, holy man.
If the question though is why are we doing well seven and eight first, it's because you were first focused.
Well, this has been.
Focus has been enough capacity and this is just in the served growth and, you know, the projected need. This whole issue with PFAS and some of this other treatment.
Right.
The iron and manganese removal is kind of a long-term thing we've wanted to do for quite a while. But the PFAS thing is certainly.
And.
Since twenty fifteen, that, well, yeah, no regulation yet on it, so.
So that house back in, you know, not, where you used to live, you know, back farther back, it's all fenced in, it looks like a house, but it's not? Is that a lift station or?
It's a wellhouse.
It is a wellhouse.
Yep.
It's pretty intense. You walk by there, you think it's like from a horse, you know, from fantasy field, lights are going and, you know, things are moving. If you haven't seen it, people should drive by there once, it's pretty wild.
It's a pretty interesting wellhouse.
Yes, it is. All right, so we're back on forty-six, well seven and eight, construction contract award. We have a motion and a second. Are we done with the discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-seven, Burke Street, Crosspoint to Shorey, construction contract award.
I move toward the Burke Street, Crosspoint to Shorey Avenue construction contract to Switlock and Sons Incorporated for a bid price of one million nine hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Motion by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion, how many bids did we get for that one?
There were two.
Two bids, what was the other?
Haas was the.
Haas was the other one, okay.
One.
All right, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-eight, Burke Street, Crosspoint to Shorey, water and sewer pipe purchase. What's your pleasure?
I move to purchase the water and sewer pipe from Core and Main for a price of one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermling. On the discussion?
Question.
How many? Go ahead.
Wouldn't this normally be included in a construction bid?
Yeah, so I guess leading up to the bid time, we were contacted by some of the contractors who said they weren't able to get pipe. So we talked with the two pipe suppliers and.
Jumped the line?
Kind of, yeah.
So you bid the construction contract having the pipe ready at the end?
Yeah, with the village providing the pipe.
So are we still in the discussion? Yes.
Yes.
So contracts on that one? Were there contracts on the pipe and purchase, water and sewer pipe purchase?
Yeah, I guess that's what we.
Does any?
Yeah.
Yeah, how many? I present how many?
Core and Main and Ferguson, they're the two major pipe suppliers that all the contractors use.
So it's just standard that you just go to two?
That they're the only ones I know in the state that provide.
Yeah, I'm just, if it was out of state, you'd have transportation costs in there.
Is it going to coming off of the contract?
No, so this is a separate cost, so the contractor's cost was only bid was, was just to install it.
We supply the pipe.
We supply it, they install, that was how the spec was written.
And we don't pay sales tax.
They say.
No.
Yeah, and they generally don't either if they're doing it for a municipal project. The main, the main issue was that the pipe suppliers couldn't reserve it for a contractor without knowing who was going to be the low bidder. But if the village reserved the pipe, they knew they were going to get.
I see.
The sale, I guess is a better way to put it.
Then they were going to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. You couldn't hoard it and then being another contract, they could resell it at a higher price.
Yeah, you know, if Haas would have had a contract to reserve it, the salesperson for Haas would be really upset right now because they reserved pipe that they could have sold to somebody else.
Do you have a rough estimate as to how much, how much supply of the pipe paved saved to the village?
I don't. It might not have saved anything.
It might have still cost more.
The contractor might have.
Let the contractor go and get it.
Yeah.
Did you take on any liability by doing that? As an example, I think it was in Crestwood, there was some stuff that was bid out and they missed some.
Those are inlets that were custom made.
But I'm just saying that that was missed in the whole process. I mean, is there liability or is this like bread and butter type?
This is just standard, you know, ten inches or ten foot stick of pipe.
It's, the pipe manufacturers just needed the guarantee that it would be used and not resold, resold, resold.
Yeah, or the person they were reserving it for was going to get the job.
Yep, okay. All right, and without any more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, that was number forty-eight. Forty-nine, Burke Street, Crosspoint to Shorey, horizontally eclipsed culvert purchase.
So this was the same situation just with the large culvert pipe versus the water and sewer pipe.
Can you describe the name Eclipse?
Ellips.
Ellips.
Ellips, oh, I said it wrong.
Not round, it's oval.
It's oval, yeah.
How many bids on this one?
We got two, then Central Culvert and CanTech, they're the big pipe suppliers.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ermling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty, twenty twenty-two Schofield Avenue pavement maintenance, Mesker to Ryan. What's your pleasure?
Move toward the twenty twenty-two Schofield Avenue concrete pavement repair project to Norcon Corporation based upon their unit prices on the attached bid tab for an estimated cost of one hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Motion by White, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion?
Is there? I think Husheng brought up for their location correctly from wrong, there was quite a bit of stuff that was stored outside along the one that you could see from the twenty-nine or something like for Norcon.
That was Gary brought it up.
Right, but I think you mentioned that about the being able to see it too, but this isn't going to be stored at that site, this is.
They'll come to Ryan Street, anything they remove comes to Ryan Street.
What I asked him, excuse me.
Yeah.
Just, I asked him if he can get the red album or crash him or do something with it so it won't be some stuff.
Here we could be adding this problem, right?
Right.
That's, that's.
Yeah, just a quick question, I'm just kind of curious as to why the range is such, so different. There was one that was two hundred and twenty-two thousand and the other one was a hundred and twenty-three thousand was there. I'm assuming that you probably read in depth the, you know, the description, but I'm just kind of curious as to why such.
I think it's mobilization.
Mobilization.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Norcom's right here. Where is the other one from?
Pembroke's out of. Phenominy in.
Western Florida.
Yeah.
Not Michigan.
Yeah, like, you know, Claire-ish.
So it could be just logistics.
And it might be how busy they are too. I mean, sometimes I think people.
They've been hiding to avoid the business.
Well, or if they get it, they're going to get.
If they get it, they'll make.
Clearly, yeah. All right, so did we get to the other one? Fifty's done?
There's no vote.
Oh, okay, so without any more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Hey, new board member, be quiet back there. Fifty-one, asphalt cold planter purchase. That was kind of fun.
I move to approve the, I move to approve the purchase of the Cat Asphalt Cold Planer mill from Fabic for a purchase of twenty-four five.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermling. This is just an add, I mean, it's just a.
It's an attachment on the.
Yep. Any more discussion?
Well, Public Works is a utility committee.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number fifty-two, asphalt roller purchase.
I'll move to approve the purchase of the asphalt cold plane.
Wrong one.
Well, that's what happens when you forget it. Always throw my emotion, somebody else, I'm.
And make a motion to approve the purchase of the Cat Asphalt Roller from Fabric for a price of two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Motion by Ermling, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Fifty-three, contract with WEX for gas cars.
Move for approval.
By Manel.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? What does WEX stand for? I was going to ask it during the finance, but I was talking too much. I tried to find it, I couldn't find it. I mean, so I know it stands for Wisconsin, it's a state and.
It's a Utah corporation.
Yeah, yeah, and then I saw it like, I thought it was actually California, Utah was?
No, it's if you look under the fleet agreement.
All that sort of, okay, that works, okay. I mean, it's immaterial, so. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-four, procurement policy for grant purchase.
That was deferred by.
Yes, it was, it's still in it.
It's still in, it was.
Still in the works, so it's still deferred, so we can just move on. Any attorney referrals from any board members? None with it, we should move into closed session per nineteen point eight five parent one. Move to closed session to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility, administration, administrator evaluation, compensation adjustment recommendations. A body break?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, roll call, right?
Right. Who's made the motion?
I don't think anyone did, but I'll make that motion.
Yeah, motion by Zhang and second by Feeny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It has to go in order. Yeah, what the heck, point of order, yeah. Now I'm in order, so I can say yes, yes.
Ermling?
Yes.
Feeny?
Aye.
Manel?
Aye. Aye.
Zhang?
Aye.
It's a guy.
Aye.
So carried.